Need to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward is advised by the Nebraska Government Act to conduct your business. A copy of the Nebraska Government Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and ask the number of remarks in five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary. It may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome, Beck, Campbell, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, Kim.
Isle number one, consideration of approval of draft minutes of September fifteenth, 2015.
No approval?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Willing in favor, welcome back, Campbell, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, here.
Isle number two, consideration of consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
John, did you make the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome back, Campbell, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, here.
Isle number three, consideration of ordinance amending water utility rates. Bruce, did you want to start this one off?
Yeah, we've got Andrew Ross here from NPP Energy who does our rate studies. We only have on here is amending the water utility rates. If you remember, we budgeted four point seven percent on the electric side for increase, but after they looked at our rates and we looked at the revenues that we got last year, we determined that it was not necessary to have a rate increase this year. So, yeah, anyway. We had a really good revenue year on the electric side, so basically what we budgeted for next year, nine point six million dollars, is pretty much what we got this year. So, we don't feel like there's a rate increase, and Andrew can talk about it a little bit more.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Bruce. Hello again to some of you I recognize. There are a few new faces. My name's Andrew Ross. I'm director of Nebraska Municipal Power Pool. We do, we work with Seward on lots of functions in the utility department. One of them is cost of service and rate design for water, wastewater, and electric utilities. And this is a rare time for anywhere, not just Seward, but anywhere where I have relatively good news. Most times when we're doing our analysis on rate increases, we're looking at lots of different factors, net operating incomes, cash reserves, purchased power, or production costs, depending on the utility, and we tend to, you know, try to be conservative. We'd rather be wrong or miss on this end than the other end. So, there was a track. I'll go through them quickly. But in the electric department, there was a rate track for four point seven percent. Revenues were strong. It was a little bit warmer in the summer than last year according to loads, at least around the region, and, but there are still a lot of big moving parts. There's a lot of capital still to be spent on the electric side. Cash reserves are in good position, and net operating incomes are in good position largely because the council acted on the rate increases over the last two years. So, the good news is no rate increase for this year on the electric department, but I wouldn't fall too in love with it. We actually do think that we might avoid a rate increase next year, but certainly by 2018, we'll be back in that nominal three to four percent range. The city's power costs moving forward will also have to be looked at as we look at what MPBD is doing on some of their things. We're also tracking transmission. That's a big part of the electric side, and we're factoring in those costs as well. So, I won't go any farther on electric unless anybody wants to ask questions, but right now it looks like the utility's in good financial shape because of the council's actions last couple of years, and for at least this year and maybe next year, we're looking at avoiding those rate increases. But our rate track, looking five years out, we always look five years out and come back in two years, we're tracking still in about a three to four percent range in a couple of years. So, it's still there, and there should be some rising costs in the foreseeable future inside of five years, especially on the MPBD side. Questions on electric? Okay, I'm not used to being able to go so quickly. The sewer department is the same. We think that we can avoid a rate increase for this year. I do want to track this one a little more closely than the electric department, largely because, same thing, capital expenses in all three utilities are a large point. They can swing things from year to year, whether you spend the money or you don't. So, I'm going to check up on this one in six months just to keep an eye on it, but for right now, there does not seem to be a need for a rate increase. We do anticipate a four and a half percent for October of 2016. So, at least I'll tell you now that there will be a rate increase on the sewer side of about four and a half percent projected now for next year, and that looks to be potentially a regular type increase. But again, we're putting in conservative measures in here, so we hope to be wrong, you know, that they're lesser. But for the purpose of budgeting in the sewer department, the city should be anticipating about four and a half percent for next October, and we'll do that as part of our next rate design. So, that leaves me to the agenda item, which is the water department. That one is still on track for what we anticipated, which I believe is a two point six percent rate increase on the water side. Water, just like the other two departments, have very large capital expenses keeping up those systems. Water, wastewater, and electric are all very capital-intensive industries. Cash reserves are very healthy in the water department. However, there is going to be very large expenses anticipated in the water department, and even with the two point six percent rate track, and we have the ordinance, and it was designed for approval today, but that two point six percent rate increase is actually using up a good amount of cash reserves as somewhat of a rate stabilization on the water department. But our cash reserve policy and minimums show that you guys have that luxury. You have the ability to use some reserves to offset some of these capital and, you know, rate pressures. So, but I just want to make that clear that we are using up some cash reserves with the two point six percent, but we think that's fiscally and financially responsible at this point in time, and that cash reserves, even after two point six percent for the next few years, will still track above cash reserve minimums. So, I know that's a lot of, for the three utilities, it is a lot of work. It's a lot of money and a lot of significance, but ultimately for today, the news is good. Electric and sewer do not need rate increases for this year. I will be keeping an eye on sewer in the near future, and water, we do recommend the two point six, which we had in the past. We do anticipate those being annual increases going forward, but for right now, we would focus on either one or two of the years. We can do a one-year design or a two-year design. It's up to the council. So, for right now, we're focusing on 2015, two point six percent, and like I said, that's using up a little bit of cash reserves for the capital improvements that are coming, but still in good financial shape, just keeping up with normal increases in costs. So, I'll sit.
Just one question. I can't remember if this was included in the past, but is there anywhere that there's like a comparison made with our place, with the state or whatever?
Absolutely. We prepare, actually, NPP Energy prepares a electric, water, and wastewater study for free. So, we, you probably will be, Bonnie, I don't know if you got a survey request yet on that? Does that ring a bell when you get those from us? Every, it usually happens around this year, October and November. We send out the surveys to everybody and start collecting the data. So, I have, I have one that has 2014 data. I'll give Bruce an electronic copy, and we will be asking data in this late fall, and we'll have the updated 2015 survey probably ready around the turn of the year, so we can, we can keep you guys up to date on that, but absolutely. And then we can do localized comparisons too on the water and wastewater, and I'm happy to facilitate this with Bruce as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Andrew, on those comparisons, is it strictly a rate comparison, or does it look at the facilities Seward has and compares it to somebody else?
It's not that extensive. For the purpose of this survey, it's strictly rates versus rates. It doesn't go into whether, now, in the water and wastewater department, in the, in the electric, if you line up everybody, it kind of looks like a linear, you know, either cheap, and then it just slowly gets more expensive. In water, what you tend, in wastewater, what you tend to see is really low rates, and then a big jump up in really high rates. And that's really because of the utilities that have had DEQ mandates or not, or haven't yet. So, I'll use the town, just one that I work with, well, I don't know his exact name. A town that I work with, very close to Lincoln, had to build a water and wastewater plant. For a town with 500 meters, they had eight million dollars of capital improvements, and that was mandated by the DEQ. So, that's why you tend to see either water and sewer rates on towns that haven't had that yet, or towns that have had to go through that, and their rates are, you know, the division is there's a lot about twenty, twenty-five dollar average, and then there's a lot like the fifty and sixty dollar average, and that's really just, those are the ones with the newer plants. So, you could at least kind of get an idea. If you saw somebody with higher rates, they probably have a newer, newer facilities. But on electric, no, it doesn't go into that kind of detail.
Is there still towns out there that don't have meters?
Yes. I, I will say this now because I worked with them, worked with them for almost a decade now, but Bridgeport, Nebraska, that was my last town that I, that had, did not have meters on the water side. Everybody has electric, electric meters, but on the water side, no, they did not, and we went through that whole process of getting meters put on those things. On the electric side, it's really analog versus digital is the first one. The main reason, that's a really good investment to switch everything to digital if you have it. Some, some have a little bit of analog out there, but analog meters tend to slow down, which if that's your cash register, that's not necessarily what, you know, it's going to increase your losses, and so digital meters. And then the next step now is a lot of towns are looking at AMIs and doing automated and smart meters and those kind of things. And here in the Midwest, we tend to not be on the leading edge of things. We tend to watch the Seattle's and Sacramento's and Austin's experiment with these things, and then we, we learn from, from them. So, but electronic vehicles, all these kind of things, we are paying attention to on the coasts because it is going to start filtering into the Midwest, and they will have dramatic impacts on the electric industry.
We do read all of our meters electronically. We don't.
Good. Yep. That means you don't have any analogs out there then.
Let goes into the three percent administration inflation.
That's just our, that's, on those tops, those are projections. So, what we're doing is we're taking real costs, such as your administrative and maybe production. I'm looking at water. You could be looking at, but we take those real administrative costs that we've had historically, and then we apply an adder to them so that, because we're looking out five years into the future, so we think we should have some sort of adder on, on expenses that has salaries and benefits or whatever slowly arise. So, really, that's just an escalator for the future.
Any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, I asked someone to introduce the resolution, I'm sorry, introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
In ordinance to amend section three dash one-two-seven of the city code to initiate a two point six percent increase in revenues charged to customers for services from the water system of the city effective with the October 2015 billing to provide for billing thereof, to repeal section three dash one-two-seven to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title, and it designated as ordinance number 2015 dash fifteen. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Willing in favor, welcome back, Campbell, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
See you guys in six months or so.
We have one more, we have two more votes here on this one.
Okay.
This is ordinance number 2015 dash fifteen. Would you like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? The question is, shall ordinance number 2015 dash fifteen be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please sway the votes.
Willing in favor, welcome back, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, here.
This is the only ordinance we have this evening, so I'll leave one final motion to make this ordinance a part of the permanent record.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Willing in favor, welcome back, Fritz, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, here.
That would be one of those. Thank you. Isle number four, this is to authorize placement of a welcome to Seward sign on city property located on East Highway thirty-four of Leve Clarence. What are you, is here, see me? Welcome, Clarence, come on up and tell us about this project.
Yeah, my name Clarence Wire, Leve two thirty-five, Plum Creek Lane. I think you all got the packets and got to look at them. First of all, little history, I'm representing the First Impressions Committee, and I think you all know that is a kind of a branch of the Chamber of Commerce, and before I presented this packet to you to meet tonight, I went to the chamber, and they approved that I come here tonight, so I didn't see that in here, so I want to make sure you knew that. And one of the things we did, we started out trying to find a spot for a sign south of Seward. We keep working and working, trying to find a welcome to Seward sign south of, let's see, Seward, towards the interstate. And hard to find land, and we have to buy it. They wouldn't even sell it. We had a lot of prospects for it. And in fact, I think we've been working ten years on this. So, we're getting a little tired of waiting. We do have a good prospect now, kind of like with Walmart and what have you, but we were talking at the last, not the last couple, few weeks back about, let's go east then, because eventually we were trying to get a welcome to Seward sign on all four corners of the city, and of course, towards Lincoln is the higher traffic area. So, we approved that we go ahead and work for one on the east end of Seward, but keep on with the one south. So, we haven't given up on that on the south. But I asked to be chairman of that, this committee for the sign, and mainly because I got a lot of my time involved on the east end. I don't know, somebody probably know all the stuff I did do down there with them, but First Impressions has spent a lot of time on the east end of Seward. And one of the things I wanted to be chairman was, because I thought the sign should be something, maybe instead of the old traditional, a little more modern or something, I would have liked it to enhance the Fourth of July, enhance the museum, and enhance the parade of flags. Now, whether, look, you see that in there or not, I don't know if you see the sign. And it was proposed after we looked over it quite a few times up and down the road and talked to everybody. The spot we picked was east of the flags, east of the old railroad track, which is kind of a little dike, backed up against those trees that at one time was a grant that we did, got those. So, when you're coming down the hill, the first thing you spot is that sign, and just make a little bit of a turn, and you see the flags. So, if you don't, it's not supposed to be designed to see that and the flags at the same time, so. And that sign was proposed. I love signs in Norfolk. I did go through Omaha, seemed like York, I don't know how many places I applied or tried to get some estimates and people to bid on it, and the one from Norfolk actually came down, looked at the site, took some pictures, so she could design that sign to fit the spot that we picked. And I was very comfortable with it, and they did a real nice proposal, looks of the sign. Went to Hughes Brothers. They actually did some work for us, kind of designed a sign. We are not, we don't have a dime to work with First Impressions, so I don't know how we're going to end up there, but yes, they did some for us already on that. Then, which would be the steel, the whole design would be the same thing you see in front of the museum, the airplanes up there, that'd be the six-sided steel, and it would be like a curve. And they would be mounted in, of course, two of them in a pillar of cement, and there's no design for that because you got to pay for that too, but I've done enough concrete and talked to different people. We, with all the contingents and stuff, that's where we come up with that two thousand one hundred. That's on the high end, so. Let's see, the sign that tells what it is, you know, the length and width and what have you there, will be LED lighting inside. So, it'll be just lights inside will shine out. The welcome to would not be lit, but we're hoping some of that light comes off of the little kind of front to do that. And of course, the funding source, we will not do anything until we get the money. We'll set up some kind of funding bucket somewhere. If you notice down under the private donations, the thing, I'd like to see the public get involved. I'm not going around solicit the chamber stuff. I'd just rather see, because this is the people's sign, you know, welcome to. And then we'll hit up the Seward Business Committee, the Seward Foundation, the LBA forty grant, Walmart, I think probably we can pick up a little there. And of course, we use the chamber for the grant application stuff, that kind of stuff that we would use. Got another thing to ask, or we got questions?
Pardon?
This will replace the sign that's there right now that has.
Yes, this will replace that sign. I'm glad you brought this up.
Well, it still have like the Qantas club and those club things on.
We don't know what we're going to do with that sign yet, because I've been trying to find out who owns it. It's been there so long, I don't think anybody really knows who owns it. I took for granted the chamber, but I don't know. Maybe they, all them people went together to those different clubs. I would have liked to seen, I talked to.
John?
John, yeah. He, I always thought maybe, well, okay, we could rent, you know, make some money for the future sometime if the sign ever need maintenance, but it's got to be a what, John? Nonprofit organization? So, the people on the bottom of it can still use it. We can just leave it the way it is too. We're not finished trying to investigate that thing or do what, I don't know. We're going to try and make a positive thing of some kind.
Clarence, I have another question. You're from John.
The sign was put up by David Avery, so he's still around. That'd be a person to contact. Yep. David Avery, Dan Schaefer's probably the one.
Any idea how long ago that was?
I would say five to ten.
Oh, is that all?
Actually, John, I was, I was the first one to put the first sign up that had the different gradient colors and the fireworks. And if I remember right, does Rex Owens farm that ground there or own that ground?
Plous.
Plous, okay, because this was back in the early nineties.
No, I think Briggs has bought that now.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I remember back then is someone donated the posts. They were old power poles, like maybe Seward County donated the posts. And then whoever the farmer was just allowed that they could plant around it, and then the chamber paid me to make the original sign, and that's like twenty years ago. So, that's as much as I know. It might just be sitting on a benevolent farmer's land.
I really can't see letting that area go. I think there's some way we could make use of it because you can't get it back.
You can't get it back, and the only way we could get that permitted with the state was it, it had to be a municipality. It couldn't be like a dealership, a car dealership. Nobody private, it had to be like a municipality.
Maybe the city owns it.
The other question that I got too, is the sign going to go north and south, or is it going to be recessed back? Is the trees an angle?
Yeah, well, we haven't found the exact part, but yes, trees, we'll say this is a tree line. We'll set it a little bit like this back against the trees so that we can get the full view as you're coming down the highway. Coming from this direction, you probably wouldn't see much.
Yeah, because I, I mean, the way I'm looking at it in the picture, your line of sight ain't going to be like the other sign. The other sign is almost straight north and south. This one's a.
No, this would be, it won't be east and west. It'll have a little bit of a turn. We're going to play with that part if we get approval here and make the best that we can do here.
Because I mean, I, for your visual, I mean, you come down that hill, you hit them trees, and then on the east side of the old John Deere building, and then right there in that little corner by the lane, if that's at an angle, your line of sight ain't going to be like the old sign. That would concern me a little bit, because I mean, that's the old sign that's been updated a couple of times. I mean, you see that.
This can be adjusted east-west, turn, I mean, the exact angle is not, you know, I'd be getting more and more person out there making an opinion on that.
I'm just kind of worried, because when you do come down that hill, you ain't going to see that sign because of the trees. Till you get on the east side of them.
Well, you won't, what trees are you talking about? East of John Deere, the old John Deere?
Yeah, Luby's trees.
Oh, yeah, well, I guess we weren't thinking that we'd be seeing that that far away, you know, I don't know how far away we'd want to. So, this is something we can look at. Maybe we've probably been cutting a tree down.
Did anybody ever think about the, the ground we purchased through FEMA?
That is it. That is it, yes.
Is there any more ground though further up, John, that we own on the east, on the south side of the road?
I.
Where Beckler's farm? Isn't some of that, well, just go, go up the, you know, basically straight across from John Deere, the old building across the road. Do we, don't we own that, some of that, bottoms round?
There's such a big drop off there. It's not a good area.
Yeah, we looked at that. It's pretty.
Where Sid has his sign is just about the most optimal place for coming down.
Right.
Once you get past the Luby driveway, you can, you can see that where Clarence is. We kind of did some visual aspects of it. Once you hit the driveway area, that little area between the Luby's and the driveway and the Great Plains, you got a good visible area right there. Both Clarence will put work on it.
It just has to be angled, right? Yeah, it's got to be angled, yes.
My point, I mean, you brought that up, that that is the same type of ground as the flags are setting on. And of course, if we would go with a sign there, it'd be nice to trim those trees. We haven't got anybody to trim those trees since we planted them, but that could be a lot, you know, really dressed up nicer. Now, I think that would complete that east end. I don't know what else we could do there. Everybody probably says that's enough. I don't know. But that's all I have unless you got more questions.
Any other questions for Clarence?
Saying none?
Thank you very much.
We need a, we need a motion here if you want to authorize the placement on this, otherwise.
Little clarification. So, this is going to be on city property, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's the same property.
And who would be, who would be the actual construction of the sign?
Clarence?
We would hope that we could get volunteers, donations, and what have you for that. If we would need something like we did on that pole, we got a back pole to dig the hole in the city, so that's something that. When we do the financing, we'll see what we get on that. The city will let us have something come down, otherwise we'll hire somebody, you know.
The reason I brought that up is the city may want to have some sort of an access agreement with the contractor or easement to go onto the property for construction of the sign. And then as far as illumination and maintenance, you're proposing that the city do the maintenance, and then talk about the illumination of it, and the city pay for the electrical cost.
Yeah, the electrical, we haven't, you know, that's back into the finances. I guess we could ask that question tonight if you want me to, but would the city let us hook onto their electrical? The LED lighting, I'm sure wouldn't, you know, for that sign, you know, can't be much. As far as the maintenance goes, that's why I was looking at that old sign and looking at when we do the financing. We hope we have some, you know, pot for maintenance, but we don't expect the city to do all the maintenance on that. I hope not. We still have the chamber. The love sign says, hey, we've got signs out there like this. We've gone ten years not have to touch them, so we'll keep an eye on it, but unless there's a big tornado or something, I can't imagine hardly any maintenance on that. It's not like a flag where you go out and change the flags, you know. The steel's going to be good and do a good job.
John, do you want to add?
Yeah, I just, I still would like to see that, I, I mean, it's great where we're proposing, but I wish you would check with the farmer that, and Dean might even be able to help you, but it'd be Briggs or Davy Jones or Plous. But the whole thing of it is, is east of Seward's going to grow, and that is proposed someday to grow. And that is proposed someday to grow further east. And, you know, you're gonna have all that new development east of where you're at. And you're gonna hit all that new development before you even hit the sign. Which, if the sign could be placed still in the old sign area, you're gonna be right there at that medium. Or, you know, where the development will be.
There might be a little problem with electricity there, but, uh, the one thing I'd like to point out on that, the sign south of town. Someone proposing, why not put it in the middle of town? I mean, I'm getting sad, but, I mean. Six, seven, eight people, first impressions, everybody got a different opinion.
But usually, once, when you hit a town, usually you hit it right where you're hitting the suburbs.
City limits.
Yes, and with the ground right there by Evergreen, that's all gonna be developed someday is proposed to the east. It's in the future. So you're gonna have all this new development, and then you ain't gonna hit the sign till you know you're past it. You know, I would, you know, but where the sign is originally, I would say you still would be okay, because just to the north is where that new development's gonna be. But you're gonna be all the way down, you're gonna be hitting all this new suburb, new development, you know, before you hit the sign. But if you could try and go where the old sign is right now, I'd say that's the optimum place.
We could look at that some more, uh, if the city like to make the recommendation to us or something on that and begin that a little bit. We aren't gonna go build that sign tomorrow. We're gonna get the financing, I hope first before we do anything.
I just feel that you're not in the right appropriate place. You know, there's gonna be development that has been proposed for the future already to the east.
Would, would be possible to have a motion that supports the concept of a welcome resort sign, but give them opportunity to, but maybe look at other locations. And then they can come back. That way you at least know if the council's supportive of the idea. And then, like you said, there's a lot of details yet to be worked out, um, between now and then anyway. So maybe come back at some point and present some of the other, other locations that might, might work and, or reasons why they don't work. And then we can bring it back to the council for their consideration.
I mean, I'll make that motion that, you know, that we support, you know, the building of the Seward sign. But I would look into possibly more opportunities to the east. Like, you know, you know, and that would be similar to in the location where the old sign is now. Also, there might be some opportunities if, if you know Davy Jones, um, you know, he owns that ground there just to the east. You know, that'd be, might be an opportunity. You know, Chris might be, can help you there. Um, but that'd be on top of the hill would be optimum place.
We looked at the top of the hill, but we liked it. We, our first thing was try to keep it on the north side if cars are coming, you know, so.
And that would be on the north side?
That on the north side, directly that road is on the east side of the Shutter Belt. It's a pretty tough place for a sign and there was the power lines and stuff, so. We'd have to go out with the guys field for the east.
I, I, I'm making that motion to support the sign, but I would, I'd like to see other opportunities. And choo-, you know, look into other avenues of either side of the road, but further to the east.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thanks, Clarence.
Thank you.
Item number five, consideration of membership agreement with Seward County Mountain Development Corporation. Uh, Jonathan Jenk is here to speak on this.
Yes, very briefly, Jonathan Jenk, eleven twenty-nine Point View Avenue, Director for Seward County Economic Development. Uh, the proposal in front of you for the membership agreement, um, is this exact same that you've seen in the past. There's, there's no changes proposed for this fiscal year. Um, and, and Bonnie, did we get cleared up what the potential issue was of, of the annual audit with the funding agreement?
Um, it is annual.
Okay, it is annual? Okay, great.
That's what was in the package.
Great, perfect, sounds great.
Any questions or comments from Jonathan on the, on the membership agreement? Yes, part?
It's just already in our budget.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and there's no increases proposed, so it's just the same as it was last year. Was there any discussion? Are there any motion?
To approve the cut of the membership with the Economic Development Corporation?
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thanks, Jonathan. Item number six, consideration of refunding agreement with Seward County. Oh, yeah, Economic Development Corporation, um, again, this, Jonathan, did you want to take this?
Well, I was just gonna say, so this actually specifically defines a relationship between Economic Development and the city of Seward. I just want to say thank you to your past support and, and continuing support. And also especially to Councilman Heans and Mayor Eichmeyer for their participation on our board of directors. We're very grateful for the time that they dedicate to our organization.
Are there any questions or comments from Jonathan? Otherwise, we entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the funding agreement with Seward County Mountain Development Corporation. Correct?
Correct.
And a second by Dean? Correct, okay. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Item number seven, this is a consideration of refunding agreement with Seward Chamber of Commerce. And Kathy's here to answer any questions or any mayhem. I believe this.
I was just gonna say, this request did increase from twenty thousand to twenty-two, five hundred from last year, but that was the budget in the last.
Okay, did anyone hear that? So there was an increased request for this one. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, that entertain a motion?
So move.
We have a, we have a motion to approve the funding agreement with the Seward Chamber of Commerce. Can we have a second? Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Item number eight, consideration of settlement agreement with Charles and Levon Evans regarding purchase of cemetery lots at Seward Greenwood Cemetery. And Kelly can kind of brief you on this real quick.
Yeah, this is just a memorialization of the agreement reached with the Evans with respect to some cemetery lots uh, that were accidentally sold to another party. This is the resolution I think that's been reached, and I ju-, I just prepared a simple settlement agreement release uh, between the Evans and the city for execution, so.
Any questions? Or Kelly? Otherwise, you entertain a motion? So did, you got to dig you some?
No.
Oh, this is like an option. You go, you go like this, you're gonna buy something.
Says it's a resolution, so that we need to.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a, uh, yeah, it's just, uh, a motion for approval of the settlement agreement is all that's needed.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Okay, thank you. Item nine, consideration of Seward Foundation application, um, and Becky Baker's here. If you wanna maybe just let people know what this process is with Seward Foundation and how this works and why, while you're here.
Okay, Becky Baker, twenty-four forty-three Wolf Road. This is the same grant application that you approved last year. And that was contingent upon receiving a grant from the Reston Library Commission, which we did not get, but we were told we would have high preference this year if we applied again. So we are applying again. No promises, of course, but, um, the awe equipment is kid-friendly technology. And it would be a computer station kind of thing for the younger kids and a tablet for older kids. Not connected to the internet, but over sixty-five different app, learning applications on each device. So it's, it would solve any problems that parents might have putting their kids on internet computers. And it'd be located in our children's area on the table chairs, so I think I'll include it in it. So, um, we, um, of course, encourage learning at the library. And the board is in favor. The process is you approve or not, then it goes to the Seward Foundation to approve or not. And then if I would get your approval and go to their meeting, I would inform them it's contingent upon the commission, the permission decisions, which is never right. So we could have things in place by the end of the year or not.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I choke on myself here. Excuse me. Becky, I'm in favor of this. My question that I had sent out to Bruce and Bonnie was, he, he said the same was last year. And apparently, uh, it proves my ignorance, but I don't remember seeing it last year. But I just noticed as I was reading through the, the project and everything that's on here, that, you know, we're submitting this and being submitted to the city council or the school board. And as I read through this and it had to do with literacy, I was kinda curious. I mean, I realize you're in the apartment of the city, but why, why wouldn't we pass this to the school board for approval and get their blessing on something that's educational, that's taking place in the city?
Everything the library does is educational, so. In, in that sense, I, I would find it odd for the school board to tell the city department what they could, could not do.
I'm not looking for them to tell you what to do or not to do. It's, it's kinda like, uh, we finally decided to, let's play nice with the county and actually plan things together at the same time, so that we're moving towards the same goals. You know, the school board is the education arm of our communities. And so I was just curious why we wouldn't include the school board as part of a process, of a learning process uh, that we're doing and get their support on something rather than just the city. Because as I read through it further, there, there's places in here where it says, is this particular request part of the city council's long-range planning? I asked for, what's our long-range planning? I don't know if it's part of our long-range planning. I see it more as an educational side of it. So, and I'm not looking to argue over it, I'm just questioning why we wouldn't reach out and embrace the, the school board on it.
I, I think the process is not set up by us, but it's set up by the Seward Foundation. And many people that are around longer know better than me about that. That teachers and, you know, departments at school go to school board and departments of the city go to you guys. I did talk, I did talk about the plan.
The school board or the school district are the ones who can apply to the foundation?
Correct.
Yeah.
And I did talk about the long-range plan and the lack there and the city not having one, but the library does have one, and the library is a part of the city. This fits our library's plan, and so technically there is a city plan or a piece of the city plan or whatever that is.
See what she did there?
I saw what she did, Johnny. I think she was poking at you.
I would be happy to work on a committee to help the city arrange plan, because our library plan rocks this year for the first time. We got high marks from the library commission. And they're using our plan as a, an example to other, lots of other libraries, surprisingly, so. We might be on NET radio.
I helped a little bit with that.
You helped, you did. So that's why I was giving you that.
I know, thanks. Are there any other questions or comments? Otherwise, that entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thanks, Becky. Item number ten, this is a consideration of a resolution authorizing the lease purchase and or financing agreement through Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation. Uh, John Hughes is here to brief the council on this item.
Yeah, this item actually was in the two thousand fourteen budget. By the time we placed the orders, whatever, it rolled over to the two thousand fifteen. That money was taken from two thousand fourteen, put in the two thousand fifteen, which you just approved, and we finally got delivery. They wanted to deliver it earlier, but I said, yeah, it's on us. It's in the two thousand fifteen. I'll wait till the budget season hits. I'm gonna start on the first block total with our payment. Um, and in the meantime, I talked him down from twenty-two thousand, some odd cents to twenty thousand, twenty fifty. It's a sixty-year loan with an extended warranty.
Sixty months. It's only a hundred and forty after sixty months, thirteen years.
It's a great price. We'll be paying for it forever. Sixty-month loan. Uh, with the extended warranty of sixty months as well. So we'll have a piece of equipment that, that they end in five years. We really don't use a motor grader that much with the exception of snow removal. We have a few gravel roads that, that we do main, maintenance on, uh, the big deal is the snow removal. And we have one, a good John Deere, and then we have a really old, uh, I don't even know what make it is, but it was in the sixties. And it's a detriment to your health to get in. Anyway, give us a minute. This is, this is the lease payment of twenty thousand, about two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and change. Four, five months, sixty months, five years.
Any questions, John?
Yeah, just remind me on this. You know, maybe this was a while back, but, you know, usually we come with multiple quotes. Was this already?
We went through that whole.
We did go through that, okay, cause it's been a while. It's fine, just remind me.
That's how I got the reduction, actually, that fell into part of the state bid requirement, so we didn't get taken advantage of the last time, but we did get a pickup on it this time.
Which it did come in front of us before, the quotes.
Does it, does it? Oh, and then, oh, never mind, just go ahead. Okay, no, it's fine. If you have any other questions or comments, otherwise, if you're ready, I'd ask someone to, um, introduce the resolution.
I move for a.
Uh, you introduce the resolution?
Yeah.
The resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty fifteen dash twenty-three. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Thanks, John. Item eleven, this is a request for update on status of Bill's Hot Mill Project to include details and timeline of land purchase options on the rail campus property. Uh, I asked Councilor Schmidt, who's on the, uh, committee, to brief the council and, and if we need to, Kelly, for the, uh, those of.
If, if, yeah, if the council wants to go into detail on discussing the actual, uh, amounts of the, the purchase options on the real estate out there, I would recommend that you go into closed session to have a strategy session with respect to, uh, that potential acquisition out there. Uh, I believe that would fall under that exemption for the closed session status.
We'll start with the update and we'll see where we go from there.
So I believe all the council members are aware, uh, that there was a CRA meeting on the project out there, of which there was a, uh, we'll call it an incomplete tip application that was filed. Uh, and I believe you also were in receipt of, uh, information from Andrew Willis related to that meeting and the requests that were made by the CRA committee. Uh, last Friday, the rail committee, it was last Friday, the rail committee met. We were supposed to meet with, uh, a member of heirs and heirs.
Darl.
Darl. Uh, Darl was unable to be with us, so we, we kinda discussed it ourselves, uh, on where we're at. It, it's really, the ball's in their court. You know, they're looking for something from us, yet they have not answered the request of the CRA committee. So at this point in time, I, I don't see it moving anywhere anytime soon. They wanted to be turning dirt in October. It's October, and we're nowhere close. So there will be, I, I don't see anything happening on this unless they continue to work through it through the winter months and then spring will around, so. Yeah, it's really in their hands right now to, uh, answer those questions that the CRA threw out there for them, so. That's kinda where we're sitting.
Okay, any questions for Bart? Have you received those? You're on that committee?
Yeah, I, I just talked to Josh and he said that people aren't returning phone calls, so I would say that nothing, nothing's going on right now.
So is there any other questions or discussion on that? Um, as far as the, the second part of, of city request, um, you could, you have two options. You can either, um, contact, uh, like Kelly or someone individually at another time, or we can go into closed session. Is that, are there two options?
Can just the, the dates of when they come up for option is, cause I, I already know the, the amounts.
Generally, uh, they come up for exercise in two thousand seventeen, I believe.
Yeah, it's the.
One is January twentieth, two thousand seventeen, the next one February third, two thousand seventeen. February third, two thousand seventeen. February third, two thousand seventeen. There's one, nine twelve, two thousand sixteen. That's it.
That's, yeah, that's good.
So once there's any other questions or comments on that item, then we can go ahead and move to the item twelve. Everyone's good? All right, item twelve, this is the city administrator's report. Bruce?
Just quickly, your report's in the packet, but, you know, we've been pretty heavily involved in the Seward Country Club discussions. Had numerous meetings, and the mayor and I have met with the employees out there to discuss, you know, what their thoughts were on it. Well, rail campus, we hired, we've been talking about that. We hired Katrina Goldsmith as a new Aging Services Commission Assistant. She'll start October twelfth, she'll have about three weeks out there with Emily to learn what she does. We're really excited about her. Usage's not real good out at the senior center, so hopefully Katrina's gonna bring some new energy out there, get some stuff going. Next council meeting, we're gonna have MPPD here to talk about the new wholesale contract. That should be good stuff. The good news, one of the good news is we received notice from the Department of Roads that our federal funds program, purchase program, has been changed from an eighty percent payment to ninety percent. What that is, is it always in the past, the federal gave us money back, but it went into a pot, and then they pretty much told us where the money had to be spent, which roads. And so what they did a couple of years ago then is they said, well, we think the states will do better with it, and so they gave the money to the states. And again, to divvy it out to the communities based on their road mileage. So we'd get so much, and other towns would get less or more, depending on their size. But what they said was, well, we, we think it's gonna take a lot of administrative costs on our side, so we're only gonna give you eighty percent. We're gonna keep twenty percent. Well, we all thought that was ridiculous, but they said, we'll do that for a while. Well, they've agreed now that, that it isn't quite as expensive to administer that project, so now our, our share's gonna go from eighty percent to ninety percent. So we'll get basically ninety percent of the old funding we used to get from the feds. But we won't have to do fed projects, we can do it with areas that we want to do with our money. So it really is our money then. So it's a good project and a good program, and, and that's just good news that it's, we're gonna get a little bit more money. Every little bit helps. And then, the mayor wanted me to say that Mel Bolt.
Well, Chris.
Oh, Chris, you wanna blow him up a mail?
Yeah, Ellen and I are both on the city rec board, and they had their meeting last night, actually. And at last night's meeting, they presented Mel with a, a little plaque on his service to the city. Believe it or not, the guy has been on the city rec board for fifty years. So he will be getting off at the end of this term when he is done, but for fifty years, he's been on the parks and rec board, so. They, they recognized him last night at their meeting.
Chris brought that to my attention, and we wanted to make an announcement here so everyone would know that, so. Thanks for bringing that to us. Did you have anything else?
That's.
Do you have any questions or comments from Bruce on the report?
One question. When are they gonna work on the East Sword Street? What's your plan?
East Sword Street?
I know you were gonna do some.
An overlay?
Yes, and that road is bad.
Yeah, Mel's on vacation, he'll be back next Tuesday, Wednesday. We probably will start reconstructing that road within the next three or four days. Got a little Michael's construction, the people did the first overlay. Basically, what we're gonna do is you leave the concrete lift by the bridge, pretty much most of the way up to the bridge run inlet, we're gonna rip that up, scarify it out, and then go back and relay that bit. And we'll kind of have a special oil overlay that goes on top of that, and then we'll come back over and do the chip seal on the whole road. There'll also be a stretch of road from Evergreen going up the hill to Golden Run. A short section in there that'll also be scarified and recompacted. This'll be the last time we're gonna do the overlay. The intent being, the idea that we're kicking around is to go from the concrete lift and we'll, the city will actually do the paving up to the bridge run entrance, and then the following year, we'll go from Ridge Run to past Evergreen, and then we'll just have a short distance to finish that. In a three-year period, we'll have concrete.
Up to the church. Yeah, because up to the church is where we stop, yeah?
No, our city limits actually goes up to the hill and that two-story house.
It does, no? Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, John. Any other questions? Otherwise, I asked for someone to make a motion to accept the city administrator's report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thanks. Item thirteen, this is consideration of a tort claim from Jay Anthony Sightzinger at eight forty-eight North Sixth Street for personal property damage. Kelly, do you wanna touch on this?
Yeah, so in the materials, there is a letter from Greg Dammann of Blommons and Dammann's office that out, that basically sets forth a tort claim filed on behalf of the Sightzingers. The Sightzingers had, the council has already taken action on this claim once already. The council denied the claim. We sent it to insurance, to EMC, our insurance carrier, for, for their consideration. They also, they've denied the claim and found no negligence, so. This, in essence, is a resubmission of the, what I, what I think is, is basically the same claim, but, but through their attorneys of record this time. So if the council wants to discuss, further discuss the merits of the, of the, the claim, we sure could. I would suggest we go into closed session for that, but my recommendation would be for the council to follow its, its, you know, its previous finding and deny the claim. Basically, statutorily, the city has six months from the date of claim is filed to act on it. So this would be within that six-month time period. This would, still would not stop the city from reaching a possible resolution with the homeowners. But, but basically what this does is it formally denies the claim, and then if they want to take further action, they can. But the statutory requirements under the Tort Claims Act requires that these claims get submitted to the council first for their consideration. EMC did have a finding of, of no negligence, and again, the city had a prior finding of the denial of the claim. EMC denied the claim, so I would suggest you continue to follow suit, but it's your decision to make.
Any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, entertain a motion?
Can we have a question for Kelly?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Kelly, my understanding is like, when we initially deny a claim, it's just kind of part of the, the way you get the ball rolling, so it gets, it gets moved over to the insurance side, right? So like, when we deny claims, as a council, we don't really know if the city was at fault at all. We just, the, the kind of, the protocol is, we deny it, it goes to EMC, then they're the ones to investigate, right? And then they make the determination.
Kind of varies from, from claim to claim. Sometimes there's a presentation in front of the council of some of the facts behind it. There's a presentation sometimes by the homeowners of what, what's happened. I recall what that exchange was on, on this particular claim, but yes, you're right. Typically, the claims like this, the typical protocol is denial and then forward, forwarding it to EMC for their consideration. And that was followed here.
Because usually, once, once we do that, we never ever see it again. Usually the insurance pays it, or they deny it and then they go away?
Right, correct, correct, okay.
The council has, I think, at least once, when it was first brought to them, rather than denying it, sending it to the insurance company, actually paid it, I think it was a low dollar, a low dollar claim.
They have paid claims in the past, yes. It's a decision from the council, depending upon the amount of the claim, as to whether it merits even going to EMC and perhaps, you know, affecting our premium or dinging or rating of certain things. So yes, the, the council has in the past approved claims, but not in this situation.
Or at this price point, this dollar.
At this price point, correct.
Yeah.
So, so what's the process? If the, the council denies a claim, what's the process going for? You mentioned six months. You know, you're gonna be spending a lot of time on this, dealing with this, what's the process?
Well, if, if there's no resolution reached with the homeowners, the, the next step would be, they have a one-year statute of limitations to file a claim in district court if they're gonna follow the Tort Claims Act. So the next step potentially could be a, a lawsuit in district court that the city would have to defend. But as I mentioned earlier, you know, there would still be the potential for a resolution to be reached with the homeowners at any point in time, even after a lawsuit would be filed, if, you know, if I came back with a legal opinion that said, hey, you know, there is some risk exposure here of going to, you know, proceeding towards litigation of the matter.
Yes, it's, so if we deny this tonight again, it, it, it does open the door for you to, to come to an agreement, a resolution.
Yes, the door is not, it's always open, it's not closed yet, correct.
I'll tell you a couple of things real quick. You know, when we first denied this, we went up and cameraed this line, our main line. And where their line comes in, it comes in basically towards, at the bottom of our pipe. It comes in down here. So it's really in the low spot is where it's at, and that's a big part of the problem. Most of the other lines will come in like this at the top of it to dump in. So if there's any kind of a backup at all, it's gonna go to the low spot, so it seems to flow there. So that's the reason why at that time you guys would have denied it or sent it forward. She did come into my office the other day, and I didn't know who she was, and then she started talking, and I went, wait, you know, you filed it. You know, you've got an attorney involved, but I really can't talk to you. She, she talked quite a bit about stuff, and, you know, there may be an opportunity to do some kind of a resolution on it, but I couldn't talk too much or agree too much because she does have an attorney involved, so, you know, with, you know, Kelly and I could maybe work some of this, work through some of this. You know, she says she can't get insurance now because they've had so many claims, and you kind of feel bad, but we also have to be cognizant of setting some kind of a precedence in the future because it's, you know, it's, it's rarely ever our fault with the sewers because we can't control what people put in the sewers. And some of the things we pull out is pretty unbelievable that they got down a toilet or something, so. So we just have to be careful about that.
Yes, Barb?
I move that we deny the claim.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the claim. Is there any further discussion? Same none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Item, item fourteen, future request for agenda, for council agenda items, administrative action from the council. Same none, at this time? Did you want to, Barb?
Depending on meeting between Bruce and Amy, we can do this on a later day and see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, until the next council meeting.
Yeah, the, the issue for a future request has to do with the St. John's development and, and the property, at least one property owner that's next to that development, and so as you, if you recall, there were items that St. John's is requesting payment on, or reimbursement on, that'll be going back to the council. And so we may expedite that so that we can get this issue resolved, but there's an issue with some of that sewer that was brought to our attention tonight. So that's what this conversation is about. So we're gonna work with the, the homeowners as well as, as the council represented for that ward. And by we, I mean Bruce. So he'll be in contact with you guys, so. All right.
And the line is replaced that we agreed to pay for on the backside of the lot, so that's done, and it's in your claims to be paid.
Okay. So unless there's any future requests, go ahead and move to fifteen, which is the announcement of upcoming events. October twenty-fifth, from ten AM to five PM, the Seward Youth Center fundraiser, and this is Fourth Street between Highway thirty-four and South Street. October thirty-first, from four thirty to seven PM, is the United Methodist Church Halloween Trunk and Treat. And that's from, at Northern Heights to Crestwood on North Fifth Street. And then on November twenty-eighth, at five thirty PM, is the annual holiday light parade. So those are upcoming events. Does anyone else have any other upcoming events they'd like to share? Same none, then move to item sixteen. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you, everybody.